Good morning, everyone. Today is the 11th of February. I'm opening the Planning Matters Subcommittee. We're in continued discussion. We have a quorum of every member here. And we also have counsel for the original developer, as well as a representative developer here. Everyone signed in my sign-up sheet? They did? Good. Let's move it. Continued discussion. And bear with me just for a second. Let's go. We have at least four items to talk about. Minutes, of course. We can't really discuss. We're still waiting to... I've been... Oh, okay. You think I'd be good at this by now, guys? Sorry about that. Hold on. Now we're...
It's working.
Yeah, it's working. Good. Doing minutes. Let's go into the mixed-use development third edit. Marilyn graciously summarized our work up to this point. Everyone should have a copy of that. Thanks, Edith.
Thank you. Excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Fox.
I received an email from Connie Brothers, Director of Planning and Community Development. And she asked me if their staff would be doing the edits to the final document. And we're going to need some help. And certainly, if Bethany is willing to do that, that's fine. So they may be working on the changes gradually as I'm submitting them to the document. I'm not sure. So that has to be settled. However, one of the items on the discussion on our punch list for today is the... And we're jumping around here.
That's fine.
Is the document prep. We have some additions on this punch list of language changes within the document that we need to talk about. And also, the issue of document prep. And it's been determined that the original submittal before the town council did not meet the requirements of the charter. And Ralph, you can certainly speak to that since you're a Charter Commission member.
Yeah, I actually responded to the Planning and Community Development Director this morning. When this came in, when we first started, it was the developer that had submitted a petition. Phase two, when it went through, I talked to George Kingston. And he specifically told me that this would be a mixed-use district bylaw created by the planning board and submitted to the town council. So the bylaw itself is being submitted to the town council, hence why we're going through everything, correcting and all. As far as a zone change, once this bylaw hopefully gets approved, then we'll have this district. Then the petitioner, being the property owner, can petition to have their parcel changed to this district. So these are two separate subjects. They can't change the parcel until there's actually a bylaw that creates a district. So like I said, those are the two issues that I see. So when the petition came forwards, it listed both of them on one. The charter specifically states, Article 2, Section 6, that you can only submit one bylaw at a time. So that's why we divided it. It's two separate petitions. Granted, they've both been submitted to us so we get the bylaw done. Then we'll look at the zone, make a recommendation back on that. And like I said, so the two of them will be working very closely together, but they are two separate items, in my opinion.
May I add to that?
Yes, please.
In our deliberation through this process, we've actually created a third submittal. And that's changes to Section 8 definitions. Because I have an ongoing list of the definitions that we have taken out of the document and referred to Section 8. And they have to be added to Section 8. So my question to the committee, and Ralph, you can jump in. In the past, you know, these have been separate submittals, as required by the charter. My understanding is these submittals can be done concurrently. One, and if the council votes to adopt the district, then we can move to the zone change, which would be a second submittal, but on the same night, concurrently to save time and expense?
It's a possibility that they can both be advertised at the same time.
Exactly.
So that they occur at the same time.
Actually, all three. All three.
Right.
The definitions.
But in theory, though, if we have a public hearing, again, I don't want to belabor this.
It would be two public hearings.
We have the two public hearings. And then we have the comments from the public. And let's say the council makes further changes in response to the comments of the public. We now have a second petition to have a zone change reliance of it not being edited. Then where does that stand? Let's say the public comes in and says, "Oh, we have a problem with a limitation of 45 feet. We want it to be 60 feet." Hypothetically, the council goes, "Hmm, that looks interesting." I'm just... You know, the thing is, the public hearing is a true public hearing. We're listening to input from the public. So if we're having a zone change that says to be changed to a here-and-after-approved bylaw, and that bylaw gets changed, but that petition, that public hearing is relying on that... That's what I'm saying is, can we truly have them running concurrently in the same meeting? Or maybe stack...
Except public hearings?
And the same night?
With the bylaw...
Having not been approved yet.
Being the first.
Yeah.
That must be approved before anything else takes place.
So if the bylaw gets edited on by the people?
Historically, they have... The council has done that.
We have done it in the past.
Right, right.
Okay.
I mean, not trying to circumvent legal...
Well, that's my...
No, no. I'm just trying to make sure that, you know... And just to make sure we do it the right way.
We're trying to ignore Jane, because she's...
Yeah. I'm sorry.
She's being very persistent over there.
Ignore the person behind the screen. Jane, go ahead. What do you got?
Just to hopefully alleviate some concerns regarding that done. If, for some reason, there is some significant change in the bylaw after the public hearing, we can always... A developer can always withdraw, right? Their application, so...
Right.
Or ask for a continuance.
Right.
Yeah.
There would be consecutive actions.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, in the same... Hopefully, in the right order.
Yes.
Right.
No, no. They have to be in the right order.
Yes.
Oh, come on. Make it interesting.
So we know what document prep means. And basically, we're not there yet, but that's something that needs to be continually focused on. Okay. Do you want to go with the language that...
Yeah, let's do... Just a couple things since the last time. I did speak to... I mentioned I was going to speak to Attorney Larry Levine, who was involved with the last comprehensive permit. And I did. And he indicated some of the language that was put in regarding favoring veterans or amissible employees, the first responders. That was focused on comprehensive permit. So this is not a comprehensive permit. So that, you know, I mean, that's appreciated, but it's not something that he could bring comment on this particular, what's before us. I also spoke with Attorney Mark Begley. Mark is, as we know, the Chair of our zoning board of appeals. And he is just, you know, he has interests, but the same token. He and I shared memories of the last two comprehensive permits in East Long Meadow, one that went through, one did not. And he seems to be supportive of what we do to the extent that it impacts him. But I'm going to keep... I'll keep him in the loop as a professional courtesy as well. And I'm trying to think of anything else. And then what happened? The other charge I had was I was trying to see if I could rearrange some of the language that... For our last meeting. And I forwarded those, my comments, to Marilyn, who incorporated even a couple other changes as well. So... And here we have... And here we are.
So you want to go with 213 first?
Let's do 213.
Okay.
Provide additional inclusionary housing with a designated percentage of affordable housing as further outlined in Section 12 herein. I had 13 in my draft. It was corrected. So any thoughts on that? Any... Is it confusing that I used the... We use the word affordable and inclusionary in the same token? Or are they, in fact, interchangeable? Because I think they are.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think since we... At our last meeting, we kind of thought that we would strike inclusionary for everything. We probably shouldn't have inclusionary in that section.
What does Webster say about inclusionary?
You know, but what I'm seeing, and since the last meeting, I've been looking into... It seems inclusionary seems to be the new... Or buzzword. Like, for instance, when we jot something... So if anything, maybe lose affordable and put inclusionary in there. I'm going to refer, if you don't mind, our Director of Planning and Community Development, Connie Brothers is here. Here and after, I'll say Connie. Your thoughts on that, please? As far as can we interchangeably use the word inclusionary and affordable? Or should inclusionary be carried through the whole definition, or one or the other? Or can we interchange them?
I would not use them interchangeably. They're too different.
Okay. But if you had to...
Affordable... I would... The board is probably aware that we were awarded DLTA as District Local Technical Assistance from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
You know, I just got that email. Thank you.
You're welcome. To conduct a housing assessment. When I compiled the report for the Department of Housing and Community Development, the assessors department, the housing director, Lynn Booth, whatever her title is, and I concluded that there was some discrepancy in the numbers. So as part of the application for funding, we've asked that a housing assessment, not a housing production plan, a housing assessment be done so that we have a baseline. So at this point, inclusionary zoning is a separate bylaw. And we have an opportunity to work with professionals at HAP, Housing and Assisted Partnership, to develop an inclusionary zoning bylaw. I would advise this committee to include affordable housing. And affordable housing... Affordable housing verbiage or text. But I wouldn't get deep into the weeds with the inclusionary zoning, because it's too much to incorporate a mixed-use village bylaw. It's separate. And it's going to require a level of review and detail that I think could be best prepared by those who deal with this exclusively under their purview. So you can put affordable in there. But as far as inclusionary, I would suggest strongly that you refrain from inserting inclusionary, the term inclusionary.
Okay. So I need Rep. to put your thoughts on that. Ralph, please.
What's the difference between inclusionary housing and affordable housing?
Affordable housing is used across the board.
Affordable housing has a specific criteria of race and so forth.
So affordable housing, we have a definition.
Yeah, Marilyn, do you want to share the definition?
Definition we have for affordable housing. Affordable housing units are units which may only be rented or purchased by families or households whose annual incomes, adjusted for family size, do not exceed 80% of the median income for East Long Meadow as calculated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or any successor agency, and are eligible and countable for the purpose of the Commonwealth's Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40b subsidized housing inventory, or its successor. That's what we put together last time.
So back to 2.13. Provide additional affordable housing with a designated percentage of affordable housing is further defined in Section 12 herein?
No. That would make...
That would make... It works for me, but I just want to hear what you guys have to say.
So affordable housing... Inclusionary zoning is a zoning, just like mixed-use...
It's a zoning.
Right. But this is also the word inclusionary, which has a different definition. So, you know, and I don't want to create any... If it's going to create confusion, maybe we just ought to strike it, because we're not looking for an inclusionary zoning.
It's affordable, so...
Right.
Yes, Connie.
Without these proposed changes, 2.13 currently says just provide additional housing. So I would think if we took the additional language, it would just say, like, provide additional housing with a designated percentage of affordable housing, so forth.
Period.
Yeah.
So just remove that.
Just remove the word inclusionary?
And my research into that section, I was looking at providing additional housing, because not only are we looking at different income levels, we're looking at different types of housing. But then, if you go further down in the document, it addresses the different types of housing. So I think it's covered. So...
So just strike the word inclusionary?
Correct.
Okay. We're all set on that? And I have... You were up early this morning at 2:49. So I'm referring to Joe.
You know, we should really all get some...
And so I just got your... I, you know, reviewed... I haven't had a chance to review it. I printed everything up, so I'll be checking out. So thank you.
And so did I.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I could just make a comment.
Yes, Joe.
I think you need to check to make sure you're going to conform to what the laws are about affordable housing. And I don't think you can just say middle income.
Well, that was my question in our last meeting.
Right.
Because...
I think you need to check that.
Okay. All right. And I had... I was thinking that that might be a pickup when we did legal review. The reason why the definition was defined as it is is because of what, in our minds, will probably be proposed in the integration of the different levels of income. And... But, you know, I don't have a personal preference one way or another. That was just the direction we seemed to be going when we talked about this since day one. So...
So what further revision? Are we waiting on council review? Or is anyone just for this language you just read in?
There is a second definition that I had added, which I don't have right in front of me. Maybe I have it here. Let me look at my... It was...
Get this.
Sure. Joe? What did you say?
Did you ask me to send you up the...
No, no. We'll work on that. I, you know, I have a second definition, which would cover that piece.
Continue. Marilyn already read the affordable housing, first paragraph 12 and Section 12. And further definition will be provided. That'll later on. All right, we have 12A. Mixed-use village district projects shall provide additional housing to include affordable housing at a rate of 10% affordable units per 100 complete residential units according to the following schedule. And then there's a schedule that I don't think we had any issue with in the past. Any further comment on that?
So the 10% affordable units starts when there's 100. But let's say they put in 150 units. Then we're looking at 15 affordable units. This is making it sound like 10 units at 100, 20 units when you hit 200. But in between is the way I'm reading it.
Eight...
Units per 100 complete residential units. So if there's 150, you still only need 10% of the first 100. And I don't know if it's just the way I'm reading it, or...
No, I was kind of confused with the per 100 complete units, too.
Yeah, it's very confusing.
All right. So by complete, that means, you know, certificate of occupancies issued and so forth in there? Or...
Well, I think the 10% affordable housing doesn't kick in until there's 100 units in the development. And then, from 100 units on, it has to be 10% of however many units you have.
And then that schedule seems to, perhaps, suggest otherwise, that 0 to 24% of the market rate units, not 100. And no requirement at that point. And then when it hits 25%, then it's 100. So we have 10%...
But what I'm saying is, if you do a development and there's only 90 units, you don't need to include affordable housing.
Jennifer Lacy says a percentage, or the percentage of total units proposed by the developer. So if they're only doing 90, they would do nine. If they're doing 80, they're doing...
But I think that's the thing the board talked about, is that affordable isn't even going to kick in until a development proposes at least 100 units. So that way, there, if someone comes in with 30 units, you're not going to make him do three.
But why not?
Well, that's what I... Maybe... Is this worth talking to Jennifer Lacy about? As part of the... She wants to... You mentioned in your email that she'd be okay reviewing.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
You know, if I may, I think that with sensitivity to the fact that, you know, for a... You know, whoever the developer is, that, you know, the town is asking for this type of accommodation within the plan. And there are many, many upfront costs to creating the development. And to be able to, you know, to provide an opportunity to, you know, get their feet on the ground and then start to offer units that are not at the same income level as originally, just from a cost perspective. And I was just... It was... My understanding was it was just sort of a doing good business, trying to let them get well-established. And ultimately, it would address the need for our town.
So through the chair, is it the board's thought that it's just a straight across 10% of all the residential units will be affordable?
That's, I think, the ultimate goal, not to have this project adversely affect our percentage of affordable housing.
I would think if the project were being phased, that each phase would reflect the requirement that the bylaw is asking.
Go ahead, Joe.
What you want to do is make sure that for future developers, that they don't build all the affordable housing into one unit. You want to make sure that it's built equally through the project so everybody has the opportunity to have affordable with market rate.
Okay.
And that's addressed in Item B.
Yeah.
Through the chair, I think to Ralph's comment, I think the schedule beneath, like, addressed, you know, allowing them to not have to build all the units upfront. But I think just the per 100 complete residential units could potentially just be struck from that sentence.
I still like to indicate that... Otherwise, are we mentioning anywhere that we want the 10% if we strike?
That's the only place.
That's the only place it says it.
No, leave the 10% affordable units.
But just not have it per 100 complete.
All right. So let's see.
I'm having trouble hearing. What did he say?
He said, basically, end word, after 10%, remove affordable units per 100 complete.
Just according to the following...
No.
Just remove the words per 100 complete residential units.
A 10% affordable units. And remove per 100 complete.
Correct.
Affordable units and then residential units, because units will be written twice.
So let's read. Mixed-use village district projects shall provide additional housing to include affordable housing at a ratio of 10% affordable units. Well, we're talking about a ratio. And we are not... There's no N to that ratio. So that has to... Because we've crossed off per 100, right?
We have, yeah.
So we need to relook at that.
No, actually, I think when they come into the site plan, they're going to come in and say, "We want to build 250 affordable units." Okay. 25 of those will be affordable. And you can put them in at this ratio. So when you complete 0 to 24%, you don't have to...
So a ratio of 10% affordable units of whatever's proposed?
Whatever's proposed. And see, that was where I was confused. I thought... I thought any development under 100, we weren't going to require them. Any development from 100 on, we were going to. Granted, we're talking about a mixed-use where I don't think a mixed-use district can really go in with less than 100 units. I don't think it would be feasible on 40 acres of land. May I ask a developer? Would you develop a 40-acre parcel with less than 100 units?
Highly unlikely. I mean, so we all...
I got it. I got the language.
Okay, okay.
Mixed-use village district projects anticipating 100 units or greater shall provide additional housing to include affordable housing at a ratio of 10% affordable units according to the following schedule.
Repeat?
Got to tweak it. It's a little too much...
Yeah, right, right.
You know, we'll tweak it. But mixed-use village district projects anticipating, we could say, a resident... Total residential units of 100, of over 100 or greater shall provide... So I'm just trying to feel...
Proposing 100 or more units.
And proposing or anticipating reasonable, you know...
Mixed-use village projects anticipating 100...
Units or greater shall provide additional housing to include affordable housing at a ratio of 10% affordable units according to the following schedule. I'm just basically trying not to... If somebody comes in with a project that has 50 units, you know... And I say anticipating, is that I'm not sure from a planning point of view is... I mean, if somebody comes in and says, "We're going to... We have this project, but we're only going to put in 50 units here." But if you add up all the phases, it'll be 200 units. Then I would say that would address it, as opposed to somebody who said, "We're just going to put in 50, reserving Phase 2 to be more," and so forth. And that kind of in-runs the affordable component. Whereas if the project, you know, can reason... Or say reasonably anticipate 100 units or greater, know, can reason, or say reasonably anticipate one hundred units or greater, then I think it would kick in. I'm just throwing it out there to kind of...
Okay, there is language, um, under three-point, uh, three-point-two-two, any phasing of a development shall include the required minimum ratio of non-residential, oh, that's non-residential to residential uses. Do we want to, now, that's still under, that's the wrong place for that, never mind.
Okay.
But it's the same, it's the same premise with what you're trying to say.
So to this thought process, I mean, is the board still good with starting the affordable once you go above a hundred units, or do they want to start it at, you know, zero and just do, ten percent has to be affordable?
That's kind of, I think, where we're, we're going, as opposed to having an entire phase of affordable. The whole thought would be to have it, that an average person walking into the project is not going to say, oh, there's the affordable section. It's a blend.
No, 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 I understand that.
Sort of like what we have with Benton Estates. You can't, I can't go and say, there's an affordable unit, there's a non-affordable unit. They all look the same to me, and I think that's kind of the spirit, and I'm watching Joe, not his, you know, not his head up and down, uh, in agreement. The idea is not to create a affordable section, is to make it harmon, you know, a blend with everybody else.
And there is proposed language for that in item B, which is...
Exactly, right here.
Which we can discuss.
So your, so your question about a hundred units and then it kicks in, no?
No, 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 what I'm saying is, a development that requires at least a hundred units, or do we want to just say, any mixed-use village development has to have ten percent affordable housing? So if you propose fifty high-end living areas, five of them have to be affordable.
Well, I think when you, when you're dealing with a practical level, you're buying a lot, you're probably putting affordable units in and, and so, I mean, you're trying to put in, uh, you know, you're not going to try to underdevelop it, and I, I, I think, I mean, is there a scenario where we could have, at, in a practical level, a forty-acre piece that somebody's going to put in less than one hundred residential units?
Or can they come in and say, we're going to do this development, and then come back to us three years from now after that development's all completed and say, oh, we don't want to add another one in the same district next to it? Because it doesn't meet...
I think, I think the spirit, especially of, of section twelve B as drafted, is that it's from, it's from right off the beginning. So if the first phase comes in and they want thirty units...
They may not know it's the first phase.
Well, they don't, but any phase come, they want to put in twenty-five units or so, I think, or thirty units, I think ten percent should kick in at that point, because otherwise, it's going to be very problematic of, of trying to have this design appearance, construction, materials, and everything blended in together when it's not there from day one.
I would agree, but I'm not a developer.
Are, are we looking too deeply at this?
Probably.
No.
I'm just looking at this, any developer's going to, if they're coming in with a hundred units, automatically, then they have to start doing the ten percent.
I'd say...
I just want to get away from at ninety-nine units. Take, oh, we're going to put ninety-nine in so we don't have to do that.
Connor, then Connie, Connor.
I wouldn't be opposed for simplicity to just say ten percent, no matter how many you're putting in.
Yeah, I'm kind of agreeing with you on that. Connie?
So, looking at another community's bylaw, and they stated this way, number of affordable housing units, where affordable home ownership units are proposed in a development project, so proposed in a development project are the operative words here, not less than, they use twenty percent of housing units constructed in a development project shall be affordable housing. Where affordable rental units are proposed in a development project, not less than twenty-five percent of housing units shall be affordable housing. For purposes of calculating the number of units of affordable housing required within a project, any fractional unit of zero point five or greater shall be deemed to constitute a valid unit. That's clear, that's concise, people understand what you're trying to get at. When I look at this, again, don't forget, planning, that application is coming to my department, okay? And we're going to look at it. And when I look at this, like, market rate residential units complete, well, I don't know how many are complete, twenty, zero to, because it's, it's a proposal, and we don't know where it's going. We don't know how many they're going to propose. Planning board might come back and say it's too dense for the area, you know, you want to revisit your site plan proposal, your proposal. But when I read that paragraph, I know, and I think the developer would have a clearer understanding of what the town hopes to see.
So that language, that be, instead of twenty-five percent, we would put ten percent to match it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, again, the key thing is not to have, um, you know, these project, the project develop, and then all of a sudden, create a, a separate area where the affordable housing is, is to have it blended in.
Right.
Like you said.
Well, that's a good segue.
Yeah.
Because as part of this proposal, section twelve, affordable housing, we have the definition of affordable housing, and then we have the schedule of, um, development, if you will. And then we have, um, section B, affordable housing units shall be integrated with the rest of the mixed-use village development as to desirability of location and access to amenities. Affordable housing units shall be compatible in design, appearance, construction, and quality of materials with other market rate units. Interior features and mechanical system, systems, rather, of affordable units shall conform to the same specifications that apply to market rate units. I mean, I think that's pretty clear, so, you know.
So...
Okay, so back to...
So these ratios, these percentage and stuff, does that cloud what we're trying to say, or does that clarify what we're trying to say?
Clarifies.
Yes.
Yes, Joe.
Through the chair, I would just add that within the project, because you were just saying, other market rate projects, you want it to say someplace else that they could point to and say, well, we did this project down here. You want it to be similar for the same project that's going on, on that site. So it's projects within that development.
Yeah.
Now, is, is that reference to what I just read, or is it with other market rate units?
Yes, but it should say within the development.
Okay.
So at the very end, just add within said development.
Because you want it to be within the same quality, look the same, not something else.
So after apply to market rate units within the development?
Yes.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
You certainly may, Joe.
So, in a hypothetical mixed-use village development, that had, say, a hundred town homes and three hundred and eighty, um, multifamily units, apartments, condominiums, mixed, units in mixed-use buildings, would you think that having the required forty-eight affordable units all be in the multifamily side of the world of the development be appropriate? Or are you thinking that there are also affordable town homes?
Or condos.
Well, condos, condos definitely.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, just that, you know, usually, an affordable housing unit is a, an apartment, condominium, one, two, or three bedrooms, it's a flat, you know, and you mix it in with all those buildings. You usually don't build an affordable, quote-unquote, townhouse. I, I'm just, I'm at, you know, because what, like, what Joe just said, it kind of says, no, all the way throughout. And you can do it, I've actually seen it where you, you don't, and again, you don't build a townhouse, but just in a row of townhouses, you, you take one of them and make it a duplex, and...
That's good.
And that's the affordable unit, you know, but is that what you're thinking? Because I know what we typically will do is we'll say, alright, there's forty-eight affordable housing units, they will be in the multifamily side of the world, condos, condos or apartments, and not in the apartment side of the world. But the ratios, the, the percentage implementation still holds. So, in the, and again, the same hypothetical forty, four hundred and eighty unit development, at a hundred and nineteen units, you're at twenty-four percent, you have zero affordable housing. But when you hit the hundred and twentieth unit, which is twenty-five percent, then you need ten percent, four point eight, or five.
All right.
So when you hit one twenty, you need five. And then the same thing, when you hit two hundred and forty, you need twenty-four. And, you know, in that, they might be in different spots, though. You might build a hundred townhouses, but when you hit the hundred and nineteen, hundred and twentieth townhouse, you need five affordables available and CO at the same, you don't get your hundred and twentieth market CO until you issue your five affordable COs.
I'm not sure that's what we're saying.
I think that's exactly what we're saying. What that does is allows the developer to build some units, basically make some money before he has to go into the affordable.
Right.
That's what those percentages were based at.
But we're waiting for one hundred units to be built before even affordable number one is built?
Well, it all depends on how many are proposed for the development.
In a, in a hypothetical mixed-use village development, that is forty acres at twelve units per acre, that's four hundred and eighty units, and twenty-four percent of that is a hundred and nineteen.
Right.
So you would not have your, your first affordable unit, you have your hundred and twentieth of, you know, market unit, that would, when you get your first five. To use the Morris Plains example that we, we keep referring to, Morris Plains, there are a hundred and thirty-nine townhomes.
What about that place?
That's under construction. There are a hundred and thirty-nine townhomes that are separated, they're, they're one area. So there's four hundred and thirty-four units, the same ratios apply. So when you hit twenty-five percent, when you hit a hundred and eight units, you have zero affordables. But when you, when you hit the hundred and ninth, the first eight affordable units need to be present. Even though they're going to be built some, even though they're, they're not built in phase one, they're built in phase two.
That's a receiver that was appointed by the state to implement that, correct?
No.
I thought I was reading it...
That's an inclu-, it is, it's an inclusionary housing development.
I thought, I thought they, um, Morris Plains, you guys went to the state and grabbed another two hundred units.
No, it was an affordable housing settlement of, in Massachusetts world, it would have been a, a comprehensive...
Forty-B, right.
Right.
Forty-B comprehensive, in Massachusetts world, in Jersey.
So doing it this way would mitigate a similar situation in Morris Plains. We would not be subject to a comprehensive permit by anyone.
Correct. Your, your, right, yours, and, and ultimately, the municipality adopted an inclusionary ordinance that allowed for that development to occur.
In the example, ma'am, in the example that you just gave about the townhomes and the number, now, they were all market rate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. When we think about this, I, it, when I, when you hear in the community what some residents might be concerned about, um, the issue is impact on town schools, services. Originally, when we were dealing with luxury housing, you know, on its own, the recommendation was that most folks at that level aren't going to be moving in with young families, although you did have a smattering of an occasional family. Now that we're thinking about providing an opportunity for not only our young folks, but our seniors, um, can we, I mean, I don't know what, what unit would, would attract more families, and I'm not against families, I'm looking for balance, that's all. And I know that's hard to dictate in a bylaw, because you don't know what's being proposed by the developer. But I do feel that, um, apartments, um, you know, a two-bedroom apartment and one-bedroom apartment, in the affordable category, would provide a senior citizen the opportunity to stay in town, they're not looking for a big home. It would also provide an opportunity for, um, a couple that don't have any children and want to, have grown up in Isla Meadow and want to stay in Isla Meadow, an opportunity. So I'm trying to be sensitive to that piece without overburdening our school system, and how do you do that?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, first of all, your, your bylaw has done exactly what you're seeking. You have allowed for the development of a mix of housing types, whether they be rental or for sale, of different sizes and types, that are going to be attractive to a broad range of, of people seeking housing. A combination of things make a mixed-use village district less attractive to families than units of comparable price in the, in the town. So if I have five hundred thousand dollars to spend with my wife and three kids, there are better choices for me to make in town than to buy a, a three-bedroom townhouse.
I agree.
You can buy a single fam-, a very nice single-family home in town, four bedrooms, three baths, for, for that dollar.
With a basketball hoop.
With a basketball hoop and a soccer net, than, than our mixed-use village district. But on the same token, like, we were laughing about what we heard Saturday night, the number of people who are my age, who are in their fifties, are, you know, that are saying, oh, wow, I can't wait, my kid, my last kid just went to college, and, you know, we got a place at the Cape, but we want a place here in Isla Meadow, because my grandkids are here. And, you know, I can't wait to be able to buy one of your condominiums, you know, to have, to keep a place in town.
Right.
And, so you're, you're allowing for all of that to occur. I, and again, I think because you have provided for a property of appropriate size, and you've provided for appropriate density, and for the mix of uses, you kind of mold it all into a box that fits, because the mix of uses lends itself to having residential up above. The, the opportunity to do a mixed type of housing allows for apartments and condominiums and townhomes. And you can then mix all of that together in a way that, that gives, you know, lots of different people an opportunity for a housing type that doesn't, really just doesn't exist in town. You know, I, I can't find a townhome, I can't find a market rate condominium, I, I, you know. And then with that, you're also going to provide for affordable housing that will be, you know, that will be affordable to, to people at that eighty percent median income level. So you're doing it by providing the mix, um, you know, and you haven't, you know, and again, we're, we're way too much of an open book here, but what you haven't done, I think wisely, is said, we want this percentage of this or this percentage of that.
Okay, okay, yeah, right.
But you have said, and this is where, you know, Joe and I have chuckled about, you know, when you sit here a thousand times, fifty times.
You've been very helpful.
But when you sit here, you know, I, I know, for, you know, and I was just, I was just confronted this, you know, with the chairman of the planning board in, in the town I work in, where he turned to me and said, you said, duh, 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 duh. And, you know, I did it. And the challenge is, when you do this, is, yeah, I got to come here fifty more times. So we know we're going to have townhomes and condominiums and apartments and mixed-use, and, you know, but I couldn't tell you if there's going to be, are there going to be a hundred and nineteen townhomes, or there going to be a hundred and thirty townhomes? And then I can say, yes, I, we can take twenty, a requirement to have twenty-five percent of this type, or thirty percent of that type, or whatever. You're going to have that mix. And that was a way, way too long a minute.
So my, my concern is this, okay? So right now, when you're building up to a hundred and nineteen units, you do, there's no responsibility at that point to put in any affordable housing. So just to play devil's advocate, which we're prone to do, uh, you just finished the CL on unit one eighteen, now you take all those concierge living properties, and, perhaps not you, but some successor of you, Morris Plains us, and says, listen, they just got a hundred and nineteen, now if you add these hundred and nineteen units, we've just eviscerated their number, we want to now put in more affordable units, and we won't stop continuing with the project. Will the fact that we say right here that we do have affordable housing, that this was designed not to ever happen, protect us?
Yes.
Or are we vulnerable between zero to one nineteen to take those numbers?
No, because you, no, because you have zoned and enabled and hopefully approved a site plan that provides for four hundred and eighty units.
You better have approved a site plan if they're building.
Right.
I mean, that, that plan may be divided into phases, but you see the entire plan out and in.
But at that, but at the point in time that a developer comes in and says, we only have a hundred and nineteen, we want more than four hundred and eighty, you have this, right now, Isla Meadow, you are grossly below your number of affordable housing, you've got these admittedly concierge luxury housing, we want now six hundred and forty units, we're going to the state and say that, are we vulnerable from zero to one nineteen?
We don't believe so, because, as I understand it, my attorney will smack me when I say it wrong, that, um, she might smack me anyway, that, that, that the town has a defense in the comprehensive permit process to say, no, no, we zoned and approved the site plan for four hundred and eighty units here with ten percent affordable, and because we are actively improving our affordable housing situation, we are not subject to this comprehensive permit at this time.
You're bringing the affordable level up on each one.
We, just, but at the, at the point in time, if you snapshot the town, we, we've just actually brought the affordable number down between up to unit number one nineteen, so...
Right, but you're, you're, you're focusing a snapshot, and it's...
What, what does the state look at?
It, the state, I hope, and I'm going to use a, the state, I hope, is looking at the panorama of, no, 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 they approved four eighty, only a hundred and nineteen got built, the other three hundred and such and such, I can't do the math that fast, are still to come, that includes the affordable.
Connie, please. If I may, it doesn't get counted until that certificate, certificate of documents is issued.
So, Don, with that being said, we're at six or seven percent now.
Right.
Even if they put in ten percent of their units, we're still going to be under that.
Yeah, but they're not making us any worse, that's the idea.
And what we're going to have to help protect us is a special permit, because the entire development has to go under it. So they're agreeing that, here's the site plan, we're building this many units, ten percent of those is going to be affordable housing. That's what we have to rely on, I think.
Our six to seven percent was based on the two thousand and ten census. We're in the middle of another census now, we know that we haven't provided additional affordable housing to meet our, our fair share. We know that. But I do know that we haven't lost any of our affordable units. I know that there have been changes in the housing between Housing Authority and Brownstone Gardens with units going from, uh, into, into market units, but those market units within the Brownstone numbers are still calculated as a total number for a, a development, so the numbers haven't changed.
It's not just Brownstone.
Oh, I know that.
No, it's something else that has happened, that we need to, we need to, we need to verify.
We've lost affordable?
Two.
Two units?
More than likely, yes.
I think it's a matter of...
Well, that's two units, you know.
The, the staffing has changed, the way of counting, and even at the state level, it discrepence, there are discrepancies between, or conflicting opinions as to how to count, which is why we're having this baseline study done through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, so that we know where we are. But there are some discrepancies in the numbers based on what the assessors have recorded in their file, what I found under the registry of deeds, so, yeah.
And I'm not, you know, I just feel like, I, you know, either way, we know that we don't meet our fair share. And so, but we're also hearing that, you know, I think this is a show of good faith, the community is trying to address the need, and, I mean, that, that speaks volumes of Isla Meadow, so...
And I think when our attorney, once we're all done, looks it over, if he has any concerns with regards to that... if he has any concerns with regards to that, he'll let us know.
Yes.
But I think at this point in time, I think the language that we have going forward with the percentage and all covers us.
All right, so let's, let's review the language as amended and, again, understanding. So the first paragraph from paragraph 12 is gonna stay the same, but Marilyn's gonna offer some subsequent language.
Where it addresses not just the median income, it addresses the low, the low income. And I do have language and I will, I will get that.
If I may.
Yes, Connie.
So as I continue to do research, we have purchased by families or households whose annual... I think you might want to change that to eligible... I just lost it. Pardon me. I believe it's eligible... Too many windows open.
What, it says eligible and countable?
Uh, no, no. Eligible households, eligible households.
Where do we insert that?
Rather than...
So rented or purchased by eligible households instead of families?
Families can be a real hot button right now. An eligible household, you could throw in a definition for an eligible household. An individual or household whose annual income is less than 80% of the area-wide median income as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
So eligibility is determined further into that paragraph?
Eligible household you could define. And again, as to continue, adjusted for household size with income computed using HUD's rules for ad, attribution of income to assets.
All right, so we need a definition of eligible households?
Yeah.
Somewhere?
Yeah, 'cause, you know, then you start to define family. Well, what's a family? Well, families today is not...
I'm just trying to think of where we're gonna insert it.
Under your definition.
Eligible household as, or we could put down comma, as defined by, if there's a standard of what eligibility is, as defined by the...
The eligibility comes from the income.
Exactly.
Well, that would be the eligibility.
So I'm just, okay.
Local housing listed on which may only be rented or purchased by eligible households whose annual incomes, I mean, this is defined for...
Seems to define, that's what I was going with, and she was suggesting a separate paragraph, but I think it's defined within it.
So the only change, well, actually, that's not true. I need the word eligible in place of families and then I will add the additional income requirement for low as opposed to moderate.
So why are we doing low? I'm sorry, why are we doing low? Are we adding lows?
Well, based on what Joe said, that we, that we have to be careful about...
You have to be careful how you define it, but low doesn't mean, it could be people with disabilities, senior citizens, that's how you can define the lows.
So we don't necessarily have to use the word low, we can use, or, can we, can we do a, again, this, can we do a preference for seniors, first responders, veterans and so forth? Can that be done in this, in this, or no?
Under the host community agreement, I would believe. That may be an area that you would put something like that because that's an agreement between the developer and the town that preference would be given.
But we're still, we're still gonna have that, that agreement tied into eligible households and affordable housing. So that agreement is not gonna usurp the 80% and so forth. It's just, can we, can it be a weighted system where first responders, veterans, seniors and/or people with disabilities will get some type of preferential? I don't know.
It was a reference to the Fair Housing Act and I'm not sure, you know.
Right, exactly. That's why I'm saying intensively, with a question mark on it.
With the chair, if I may, in my conversation with HAB, when you include veterans, sometimes you then restrict it to seniors because most of the veterans, frequently what they found is the veterans applying for such housing are of seniors and therefore you, if you set that as a priority, then you may be removing someone who is a single mother with a small child from the pool of applicants because that senior gets bumped up. So that veteran gets bumped up. So again, I think that if we have, we run this by, go ahead and put in what you want, but once Katie Wright gives her, passes her eyes over it, she may offer some suggestions that would help us to tweak it so that we comply with federal fair housing and don't deny others who may qualify as an eligible household from residency in our...
And I suggest, I think we just put something together at the moment and for our next meeting, hopefully Katie can be able to respond and get it back to us with some comments on there as well. Especially because that's right up her alley. And so let's just see what we have up to this point, so we can be in agreement.
So perhaps an item C in this section might reflect a plan or proposal for some preference, preference based on whatever the language come, I mean, just...
Yeah, I think I'll open it up to see what, see what suggestions she has so that we can at least banter it about. If she gets it to me before our next meeting, I'll share it with the group and see if we can at least have some, so we'll be prepared.
Yeah.
Yes, John?
If you want, you know, you could, whatever you, whatever you put for your preferences, if you include to the extent permitted by the Federal Fair Housing Act, and go from there. Again, it's, it's all about marketing. It's where do you generate your list from? How do you generate your list? And, and what programs available to attract people that they understand? Like, yes, we're here and, yes, we want you. That's the challenge for us. We were the proponents of the veterans' preference in New Jersey and Jack and Joe had the law amended to allow for it. It's actually one of the few preferences that is allowed in New Jersey law. But what we're finding now is actually there are a lot more veterans that are young because, you know, we have gone through Iraq and Afghanistan for 20 years now and we actually have a fair number of folks that are, that, you know, that are coming out after 10 years or whatever, that do qualify. So, but again, it's about outreach and making sure you're getting to those housing officers at the bases, getting to the housing officers in the discharge points that you're, you're able to get those, get those people.
Through the chair, so we need to be very specific, are very specific and careful on how we word this.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Which is why I think that we're fortunate through Connie was able to have Pioneer Valley be able to help us with some technical assistance on this. And I think that would be, we'd be well-served to take the draft, send it over and see if we can get some comments in advance of our next meeting. Because, you know, that's what they do. But I think we should also at least go over it right now and to get what our take is on it.
And through the chair again.
Yes.
We're talking, stressing with the people on camera, we're talking affordable housing, not Section 8 housing.
Correct.
Just stressing that if anybody happens to jump in after the commercial break.
There you go. So right now, this section again is affordable housing. It'll be affordable housing units are units which may only be rented or purchased by eligible households, eligible was the language revision, whose annual income, adjusted for family size, do not exceed 80% of the median income for East Long Meadow as calculated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development or any successor agency and are eligible and countable for the purpose of the Commonwealth's Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, subsidized housing inventory, SHI, or its successor. To be inserted will be some further definitive language that Marilyn's gonna provide, right? That'll be another paragraph.
Right, right, or just a couple of other sentences. I'm just trying to find it.
If you have it.
We'll figure it out.
Then we have a mixed-use village district project, which, I was gonna add, which anticipates 100 units or greater being developed, 100 residential units, I assume that's assumed, that's understood, units or greater being developed shall provide additional housing to include affordable housing at a ratio of 10% affordable units according to the following schedule. And then we have the schedule listed, 0 to 24, 0, 25%, 10, 50%, 50, 75%, 75, 90%, 100, 100% 100. And then further, we have a Section B.
Keep going.
Okay. Affordable housing units shall be integrated with the rest of the mixed-use village development as to desirability of location and access to amenities. Affordable housing units shall be compatible in design, appearance, construction, and quality of materials with other market-rate units. Interior features and mechanical systems of affordable units shall conform to the same specifications that apply to market-rate units within the development. So if we take that, send it to Connie to send to our technical consultant and then hopefully she can come back with comments, critiques, revisions. We can be able to finalize it hopefully at the next meeting. And if further warranted, if this, without taking up too much of our technical assistance time, if the consultant is available to attend our meeting, if she wants, she has further questions, please consider Connie an extension to do so.
One more question. That phrase, "within the development," at the end of market-rate units, should that also apply to the second-to-last sentence where it says, "and the quality of materials with other market-rate units"? Because the last sentence really just talked about interior stuff, whereas...
Market-rate units within...
Like, within the development?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
All right, I'm, I'm, show me where...
Right here.
So we're, I mean, I, okay.
Within the development.
Of course, they're gonna ask quality of materials.
But what they're saying is comparable to the same materials that they're using elsewhere in the development.
Or maybe we can add a bullet point somewhere that says, "When referencing to units, all units shall, we are referring to units within the development." And that way, it carries over to every time unit is used within this section.
I mean, it's only twice in the paragraph.
I'm just looking at the first sentence. But I'm fine with it too, if you want it, just have it within the development, within the development over here.
No, my question here, this one where, it's just an added, so the, the market, within the development, the same with the other, but you leave the market-rate units on both, it's like, it's the same, they get the same ending, two sentences.
Right, so it's not market-rate units that are market-rate and other circle surrounding, is specifically referring to the market rate within the units, not market rate within the community.
Do you want me to, at least for the definition, the schedule of development and the criteria for the affordable housing units, button that up and then get that to Connie so that then PBPC can look at it and see? Happy to do that.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right, so that one we can put aside unless there's any other matters in there that we want to talk about?
On this page?
On, on this page, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next. Any preference, people?
Okay, other items for discussion, I, we have the host community agreement. Ralph and I realized there's no signage issues addressed and it, I don't know that it has to be very cumbersome, but we need to talk about that.
No signs allowed anywhere.
No signs allowed anywhere.
No LED signs?
No signs. You know what? If the businesses are good enough, they'll draw their own people. They don't need signs.
And also, Attorney Jane Monaleski emailed me when she got the punch list for today and she suggested that we had discussed storage, I, you know, a defined possibility for storage units, which we haven't really buttoned up. So we need to talk about it. So that's on the list too. So whatever, what are we supposed to do?
Let's do storage. All right, I'll ask Jane, what specifically we talked about? We talked about storage for occupants and homeowners and having their personal storage in there? Are we talking, are we referring to storage?
Self-storage.
Self-storage units. Self-storage, but not self, that someone who's outside can come in.
Anybody can rent it.
Anyone.
Commercial use. To create low-impact, to create low-impact commercial use of high value that is, one, a good thing for our, it will be used by our residents and businesses. That will happen, but again, for viability, we would want to limit it to that.
Since that's a business use, would that percentage of storage, in your mind, be considered part of the 20%?
Yes.
So we allow self-storage units in town. Obviously, we have multiple. I looked in our bylaw, I don't specifically see that listed, but obviously we allow them there in town.
Is it under the table of uses?
I looked under the table of use. I didn't see anything for self-storage units.
Interesting.
So I think they just considered that a retail business or something? I don't, I don't know if it's...
I think that's how we, the code enforcement officer interpreted it as retail use.
So if it's considered a business use, is it, and attributable to the percentage of business, will it be under the same requirement that, you know, we have size limits as to one particular business, can't be larger than that? Would the storage unit, air allocation also be subject to that? What was the size, I think, on that?
25.
25,000 square feet.
So 25,000 square feet, is that too small for a storage unit?
That's a little too small.
That's why, that...
Can we bump it a little bit?
Well, that's why we gotta revisit that.
Well, you know, and I was thinking after I got Jane's email that I recognize that there might be a need for something like this at this location simply for the convenience of the residents. I mean, you may be in an apartment and you have a lovely Christmas tree that you have no way to store, you have a storage area. There may be some other pieces, you might have a, and I don't know about the storage facilities can, is it, there may be some fire hazard requirements in terms of storing a motorcycle, for instance, in any, so that may not be permitted, but you might want to store your bicycle. I mean, I'm just looking at things that, folks are living in an apartment now. They've moved from a home and they have some things...
What's the typical size of a storage unit? Is it 10, 10 by 20?
Five by five, five by 10, 10 by 10, 10 by 20.
So let's say 10 by 10, that seems to fall in the middle. We're looking at 100 square feet. And if we're allowing 25,000, that's 250 self-storage units. 250 self-storage units in a development with 480 residential units, that's every other person, if those were the ones that received preferred treatment, would have.
I love his personality.
I just, we, we picked the 25,000 square foot max. When, the planning board picked that when it was a lower percentage. They were recommending 5 to 15, that this committee has bumped that up. I'm just, if we could go to 30, that would be great because I, I have, and again, I, I don't do, I do very little new. We put self-storage in a mixed-use village development in a town in New Jersey and they said, "Great, you can have self-storage, but it has to look like your other buildings." So we have a mixed-use village building with retail on the ground floor and two stories of apartments up above. And then we have a mixed-use village building... up above, and then we have a mixed-use village building right next to it, that is retail on the ground floor and two floors of storage up above it, and then we have a third building that's, you know, mixed-use village with retail and just storage. And it's twenty-eight thousand square feet. If we go to thirty, I can just go, boop, it's beautiful, it's brick, it has windows.
Does that mean then that you would be willing to bump your fifteen percent up to seventeen percent commercial?
No.
I was saying, it's just...
Whatever, whatever, again, whatever it is.
Well, and I, and I think there is value to think about this, because of what we're trying to accomplish on, on both sides of the table. If we were inclined to permit it as a use within the mixed-use development, I'd like to see it under special permit.
The whole thing's under special permit.
Well, but we have individual uses under special permit, massage therapy, restaurants, and specifically address, I mean, that would be...
Great.
I do like your thought, though, that it has to...
It's gotta look like, it's gotta look like everything under the law.
I mean, and that, that would come from, do we, do we want, excuse me, to add under our regulations, some specific criteria for that kind of use, based on what I think would work?
Would we be allowing two separate uses, one up to twenty-five thousand, and if they so choose the self-storage, one up to thirty thousand? Or are we allowing one use to be up to thirty thousand square feet, as long as that use is self-storage, otherwise twenty-five thousand, if it's something else? So in other words, if you bring in a grocery store, the maximum's twenty-five thousand, but if you decide to go with the self-storage use, it's thirty thousand. It's a lot of language.
No, not a lot of language, it's a lot of percentage. We're now, we're now talking about a thirty thousand, and, 'cause that's, it's only one twenty-five thousand they're allowed, right?
Exactly.
Correct.
This project that you refer to, John, in New Jersey, that has a self-storage, is it a mixed-use?
Yes.
And what is the other tenants, business tenants in there?
The regular...
Any large, any twenty-five thousand square, any, like, restaurant, so, like, give me, if you don't mind, some examples of what else is complementing that particular...
It's your classic retail, coffee, pizza, Chinese, nails, hair, all those classic services.
So, through the chair, what your thought is, is to just basically, instead of saying one use of twenty-five thousand square feet, one use not to exceed thirty thousand square feet.
But if, I, I do agree with you, I think if that's the case, we're bumping the number, I think we gotta bump it up to seventeen percent.
I mean, it's just...
Then leave it at fifteen and twenty-five.
It's hard enough.
It's hard enough.
And again, what storage lets me do is, is not do something stupid. So, we talked about, we talked last time about the viability, commercial uses in mixed-use developments, and that they're dependent on traffic and visibility and all those types of things. So what does, what, giving, giving us storage, what that lets us do is easily hit our fifteen percent and not have some silly commercial space that I'm gonna have to come back later and ask for relief on because it's big. It allows us to build regular space that'll at least be visible, be parked, do all those things, and easily hit our twenty-five percent, our, whatever, fifteen percent, whatever, our hundred thousand square feet, that's effectively what it's gonna be. It lets us easily hit that number without doing something stupid.
Through the chair.
Please.
I would think that storage units would actually be easier on the parking than having all sorts of other commercial uses that you're trying to hit twenty-five thousand square feet of.
The, the only area in storage, you know, that we just gotta be cognitive of, and hopefully there'll be some language on it, is every storage place that we have in East Long Meadow, and maybe I'm wrong, has boats, vehicles, stuff that are not in the four corners of the building.
You're talking indoor storage.
Indoor storage.
So, so there has to be some language in there specifically, so we're not driving by and seeing people's boats and RVs and stuff like that.
We don't have that room, we won't, we don't have that room. And again, it can be addressed by the special permit, whatever it is.
Plus, it's not, you know, if they have an RV, they can store it somewhere else within the community, we certainly have all those things.
You have other storage units for that, just other places.
You have other space for that, you don't have to get in the door before.
May I?
Please.
John, through your example of the mixed-use development that has thirty thousand square feet of storage right now, is that what you say?
It's twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand?
The, the building is twenty-eight, it's a nine thousand plus or minus square foot footprint.
What's the parcel size for that?
Oh, it's huge.
It's huge, so we're, so the, so the requirement for the commercial retail is bigger than, than fifteen percent, or, I mean, it's not?
No, no, the, the fifteen percent is very high, I think I've, I think I've said that a thousand times.
All right, okay, all right.
The fifteen percent requirement is very high, we understand it, I get it, we'll meet it. It's high, you know, there, again, it's a big parcel, it's probably a ninety or a hundred acre parcel.
Okay.
Um, it, it's still four-hundred-and-some-odd units, um...
Four-hundred, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's just comparable to what we're at. Where would that be?
But, but the storage is actually twenty-eight, and then another eighteen, so it's about a little, a little less than fifty. It's, it's in two buildings, again, it's one building that's just storage, and then it's a second building that's retail on the ground floor and storage up above. But what I like about it is, I know I can design a building, build a building, that looks like a mixed-use building, it's got windows, it's got, you know, like, it, it looks normal, it's not garage doors and, and all that kinda stuff. So it'll, you know, it'll fit.
And this would be multi-floor?
Yeah, multi-floor, three stories, conditioned, so you have conditioned space, so it's, it's heated in the winter, it's not cooled, but, but it's heated in the winter.
So, just a question through the chair, I'm actually interested in the philosophy, I mean, I'm used to a self-storage unit as the ones we have in town, they're all one floor with a garage door opening, that doesn't sound like what you're looking at if it's on the second or third floor. It sounds more like you either go up the elevator or upstairs, walk down.
You go up the elevator. That's why the building's small, so that you have less, the magic is you want less than a hundred-and-fifty feet of travel from the elevator to the unit. They have a little cart, you know, we have them, and they go to their car, they put the stuff in the cart, wheel it into the elevator, take it upstairs, and go. What, what this is, it's the classic, I'm getting downsized for my four-bedroom, three-bath house, and I, and I wanna keep my dining room set, and they're gonna take their dining room set, and they're gonna put it in one of my five-by-tens, and they're gonna store, and they're gonna pay me, you know...
Over the next ten years?
Six hundred dollar, you know, whatever, for the next, three years until they decide three years from now.
Two months' worth. Throw it out.
I don't need the dining room set, and, and they're gonna, and they're gonna throw it out, and they're gonna move out, and the next downsizer's gonna come in. It's, it's literally, it's just delayed, delayed disposal. But, but for our use, it's actually perfect.
You know, and I actually think because, because your use, and because it's public, it would be public, it may be attractive to someone who has some very special pieces of furniture that they don't wanna expose the element
Right.
Yeah.
by not being either heated or cooled.
Right. Conditioned space is more valuable.
Correct. Through the chair, and this will be, have restrictions on it?
Well, that's what I'm, yeah, I'm working with, yeah.
Yes, it has all sorts of fire, all that restrictions that we put in for rules.
No bans, I, I'd agree.
Right, no garage bans.
Yeah, okay, good, good.
Yeah, you can't occupy the unit, so you, yes, something like that. Yeah, so you can, yeah, you, you can't, you can't occupy, you can only store.
I've seen that happen.
Yeah.
So, how about the creation of a definition for an indoor storage unit?
Yeah.
So Ralph, I think this, this is what he says it kinda looks like, you can see.
Yeah. And then, set that up to where that is available in the mixed-use village district.
I'm sorry, wasn't this...
I'm sorry, yeah, I know, it was bothering her.
If we create a definition, and then under the table of uses, put that, that particular use is allowed in the mixed-use village district.
I also think that we need to just, under the additional provisions, maybe address, I think, that the self-storage in a mixed-use village is designed to reflect the aesthetic look of the residential use, you know, just so that it, it, we know, or that any future developer who's not sitting at this table knows that's the intent of, of allowing it to be there in the first place. So, I need to do some work, or, or somebody, if anyone else wants to do...
Do you have that definition for that project you just showed us, of how the, uh...
That was a Google search.
Oh, I was giving you credit for this one.
So, is your answer no?
So, no.
All right, well, we're trying to work a definition that's not...
I'll, I'll do some research and see what I can come up with.
I guess, I guess the main thing is, it's indoor storage.
Indoor storage, right. And no boats, trailers, you know, I mean, that's, well, that wouldn't be indoors, obviously, 'cause of the size.
Small boat.
You haven't seen the boat I can afford. This big.
Zodiac, deflate, deflate the Zodiac, put it in.
You do get cars, you get cars.
That's MG.
Oh, you, you get, like...
People that want to store a car inside.
Yeah.
There's...
Collectibles. And how do they get it to the second floor in the elevator?
Well, that doesn't, they're, they're around four.
Lot of space, running up there. Okay, so we got storage, we're defining that, any other follow-up on storage, and basically, where, where would we put that, is, is, in the whole scheme of things here?
I would, well, first of all, it would have to go into the table of uses.
Of course, yeah.
And then depending, there may, if there's additional criteria in the table of uses, we could have a little asterisk saying to see the, the bylaw that we're creating, so that folks know that there are restrictions that are in place.
Is it like, three, in section three somewhere, under business, commercial uses?
No, under...
Business and commercial uses in here?
Or, or additional provisions.
Okay.
Which, which is in the back where we put...
The other stuff.
Everything else.
Right, right.
Would it not fit, it's just being a standard and condition?
I'm sorry?
Would it not fit with, it's just being a standard and condition in the table, like that additional language?
I don't know.
So, through the chair?
I, wait a minute, I, I'm, I'm not sure.
What, what he's saying is just, just simply included as a, in the table, would that be sufficient enough?
No, I think you need to address to the bylaw.
Because the looks and all have to be...
Right, because if we do it in the table alone, we're also gonna have to go into, do we want these type places in other parts of town? So we're gonna say, "Business zone," and we're gonna put yes for a indoor, totally indoor storage facility?
No, I know, but I mean, like, if we have, there's two columns in the table, though, you have like the classification, which would just be the indoor storage unit, and then under your standards and conditions, could that just be a blanket of, it should meet whatever the buildings look like?
It all depends on how much we come up with, if it's too extensive, I, I also think it should be in the bylaw.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree with you, and I agree with them, is that they should be, they should be tied into each other, 'cause it seems that this is the first instance we're having of this type of project. What I wanna make sure is, which is not a huge deal, but it could become potential, is you take somebody, like, one of the projects we have in East Long Meadow, East Long Meadow Public Storage or whatever, and they say, "Hey, I like this idea of this, this unit," and then they're gonna come in and maybe try to do a, a plan where they build it, build this within the, which, it may be okay, but it's just, we're stepping into that area, and the question, the query is, is that where we wanna go with our discussion today, or leave that to the planning board to discuss?
I think we should leave it to the planning board and sticks.
As far as getting beyond our scope. Yeah.
That was my point.
Okay.
To this mixed-use village district.
Yes, all right, so, let's see what else we got in here. We got, is it okay, are we done with storage for the time being?
For now, okay.
Uh, signage, or do we wanna go to host community agreement?
Let's do signage.
Signage, okay.
For two hundred.
Signage for two hundred, what is, we don't have language in, for two hundred, Quebec, so...
In the, I think, through the chair, we cover those under the design guidelines. Don't we refer to the design guidelines within this mixed-use bylaw? It should still be under bylaw.
Design review, seven? So, the, are we, so the signs and sculpt limitations is gonna be, to what standard? Size, illumination, type of illumination, and so forth, or just place it under current town bylaws?
So, we have design guidelines under our site plan review.
What does it say there?
Yeah.
It says, okay.
In the, in the mixed-use village?
So, we look at these, paragraph seven, design review.
Okay, okay.
And, all right, you'll see, all right, the sentence reads, "The design review committee or the planning board acting as the design review committee shall review applications for all actions that are subject to the provisions of this section and shall make recommendations to the developer prior to and within the public hearing," that was added, "and within the public hearing, for site plan review, as to the conformance with the design standards established within section seven point four and zero, design review. Planning board shall retain overall responsibility and authority for design review approval. Planning board may also employ consultants to assist in design review at the expense of each applicant." So, if we refer to design review, even though the sign bylaw is not, the sign bylaws now under the purview of the building commissioner, there is a section under design review that refers to the signage, because you want the signage, any signage to complement the character and the architecture.
Can you direct me to that section?
Yeah, we have the book out, too.
So, you have to get, so...
So, you're talking...
It's seven point four-three, design review, under design review, that's seven point four-three, it says, existing and proposed business signs and traffic signs.
Seven point four-three.
And that's under content of site plan. So, it's like page seven dash two-four, I think, in your bylaw.
So, the sign bylaw is a separate section five point eight.
Right here, seven point four-three, right here.
Thank you very much. I'm pretty sure that should go right there.
It did, it sounded good. It's, yeah, so I see it.
All right, so, industrial garden park is exempt, and this proposal would not be industrial garden park anymore.
Correct, correct.
So, we have to...
Okay, it might be a little bit older.
So, through the chair.
Yes, yes, Ralph.
Just King Ralph.
King Ralph. Ask her, Ralph.
We have a section in our bylaw, five point eight signs. It lists every district, what's allowed, what's not allowed. It doesn't say, "Please refer to design review section." And in all due respect, our design review committee has been defunct, which reverts back to the planning board. Now, we were just told that the building commissioner is in charge of this, not the planning board. So, if we don't have, under five point eight, a section that says, "In this district, this is what's allowed," our zoning enforcement officer cannot enforce what's not in there.
Exactly, yes.
I think we need to put a section in that says, "Mixed-use village, this is what's allowed for signage."
And then, design review can look at it from a different perspective. I mean, I'm dating myself, I remember when Westfield Bank came into East Long Meadow, and they were at the Rotary, and they put in a wonderful, bright red sign that turned the white church at the Rotary pink, and so forth. So, suffice to say, that didn't last too long, or else we renamed the church to Pink Church. So, so I think that's more in the purview of the design review, in terms of looking at the impact of the sign, how it's illuminated, impacting the neighbors, and so forth and so on, that could be in there. But as far as sign, signs, the type of signs, the, how it's mounted, that type of thing, I think it has to go, it has to be under some type of guidance, so that the building commissioner will have some guidance. And that, that leads us to our next question, is, what guidance are we gonna use? The existing guidance for a business zone, or are we gonna use something else, because this is a hybrid?
Also, through the chair, will there be signage at the front of the development as you're turning in, to show what's, what's there?
Yeah, I mean, similar, I'm seeing it, my vision is seeing it more like what we allow for the center, the center square project.
A directory sign.
A directory sign, type, type, and that is within the purview of a business, correct?
Correct.
So, then we'll say the standards for the sign, signage, because of the fact there's a business component in there, will be under the business zone.
Now, with that, as they said, there may be a gated area in... Now, with that, as they said, there may be a gated area in the back with condos and all, that's all residential. We don't allow signage in residential, so if that's a separate entity at the back, not that there would be a reason for signage, but we shouldn't allow it, because we don't allow it in residential. We should allow the signage where it's needed for the business aspect of it.
But I also do think for public safety and so forth, and emergency responders, we need to have some degree of signage. If you ever play.
Directional signage, is what we're talking about.
Like saying, unit so-and-so, point an arrow here, and so forth. I think that has to be in place. You see it in.
Those would be unit.
Condoms, Georgetown condo, and so forth, and others. And if you play the TPC golf course, they have these signs directing people, and so forth, down in Cromwell. So the, I'm thinking we need it for public safety, we can't just have a hard, fast, you can't, because this project's gonna be all around.
But I do believe that's covered differently, because we discussed that, like, over on Benton Drive, exit, entrance, stuff like that, that's not addressed in our bylaw.
No.
But they're allowed to put them up for public safety issues.
Yeah.
That just, like I said, so that's not, I don't think that's something that we're really looking at in the bylaw. We're looking at Starbucks coffee with an arrow pointing down this way from the residential, you don't want that.
Right, with a, you know, bright spotlight or light on there, or something like that. So what kind of guidelines are we giving design review, and we're giving our building commissioner, as far as use, again, are we using the standards that a business district would be using, or are we using some other standard?
Excuse me, sir, before you go down that highway, under design review, 7.4.0, purpose, 7.4.1, maintain, in addition, specific purposes of design review are intended to, the final check, maintain and enhance the appearance of and size of signage new and existing. So that falls under design review, because when you're presenting a project that is all-encompassing, if you will, generally, there's a sign, there is some sort of signage that works well with the project. Furthermore, under design review, it calls out signage. Okay, under section 7.4.4, initiating design review, six, site development plan and architectural drawings specifying, E, method of illumination of all exterior signs. So we have, within our design guidelines, again, under 7.4.5, design standards, the design review committee shall review the project for conformance with the following design review standards, E, architectural details including additions, signage, awning, lighting, pedestrian furniture, planting and paving, shall be compatible with the architecture of the principal building and site landscaping with regards to scale, materials, color, and texture. So, I think, again, before you invest your time discussing the incorporating sign, signage into this mixed-use business development, we refer to design review, and I also caution you in regard to whatever you're going to say about signs of the unfortunate Gilbert versus, excuse me, the Supreme Court case, Gilbert, what is it, help me with it, something Gilbert, Gilbert versus.
Green is large, but not that large.
But because of this Supreme Court decision, it impacted all of the United States of America planning departments' signed by law. Reed versus Arizona, Reed versus Gilbert, that's the kind of case. So I caution you, please do not wander down that path.
The only path that I would wander down is one that seems to be suggested under 7.4.1, below that last bullet point or checkpoint, all submitted plans are subject to the requirements of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws. I just think we just need to decide which requirements of the East Long Meadow zoning bylaw that the people in design review are gonna be using for their standard, and I think we have.
Business.
Business.
Then the original, the original application before us referenced the sign by law business section for the setback requirement for the, whether it be a directory sign, or, you know, East Long Meadow Commons, you know, a big sign like that, and then some directional sign throughout. I, I think.
Through the chair, I have a question for our planning and community development director. This development goes in, goes through site plan review, says we only want one sign out front. Everything's good, goes through the design review, everything's great, gets approved. Two years from now, they come in and say, nope, we wanna sign there, there, and there. That no longer goes back to the design review committee, that goes strictly to our zoning enforcement officer, who looks and says, meets the criteria, go ahead, put it in. How do we, how do we combat something like that?
So we did have that actually with development on the corner of Dwight Road and Maple, and because it fell under the special permit, the signage was part of the special permit approval, they came back to the planning board because they were making modifications for that.
Well, it's under special permit, but I still feel we need to define.
So, any special permit, when someone changes a sign, they have to come back in and go through a special permit hearing to amend it?
It's a modification of the special permit, and under the bylaw, any modification comes back before the planning board.
It's supposed to.
It's supposed to. We've got a good building commissioner, he should catch us.
All right, so hypothetically, let's say Dunkin' Donuts is one of the, is a coffee shop in town, in this facility, hypothetically. And then hypothetically, Dunkin' Donuts decides to change their name to Dunkin', and they have the same sign, everything, but because this project's under special permit, Dunkin' Brands would have to come back to the planning board to get that replacement sign of same size, dimension, and so forth, approved, through special permit?
That's what we've seen with Center Square.
All right. Yes, Jane?
I'm on the ZBA in Long Meadow, right, and we, same, same deal, like, when someone comes to us, right, and they wanna change the smallest thing on their sign, and if their project's under special permit, they have to come to us to get their special permit modified. I literally just did it the other day.
Oh, it's okay, I'm, I'm, hang on, this is, it is what it is, you know, that probably gives them a force.
And for a developer's standpoint, all we care about is it's the same for everybody. As long as Dunkin', and Starbucks, and Joe's Coffee, all have to do the same thing, fine.
Just want to be equally treated.
That's right, fair statement.
And that's what we're.
So I think what we clearly need to do. Question, and this is probably, design review, is that something that's compulsory, or can the planning board waive the requirement for design review? I'm just asking as a hypothetical.
I think your bylaw says shall, not may, so I think it's.
This bylaw says shall.
Yeah, I think your bylaw says shall.
All right, so regardless whether, and the default is that there's no design review committee, because I remember back in the day, we did have one.
Goes back to the planning board.
It just goes to the planning board, I would say. Yeah, I still think there should be some.
Guidelines.
Core guidelines of what standard to use, because you can take a look at signs, and industrial garden doesn't have that requirement. But then, of course, this isn't industrial garden, or industrial anymore. If, again, we're talking about this project, it would be under a brand spanking new zone. What standard does the zone have? The only standard that we don't have standards for is industrial garden. Should a project that's ostensibly residential in nature not default and not having any standards, and just be at the whim of the design review committee to design it, or should we have at least some core standards? And I'm suggesting core standards.
Wow. I'm just, 7.8, and small stuff for, business district.
Business district.
Well, yeah, it is.
But no, no law for Chestnut, or, village at Chestnut, or, like, identity.
Signs of business.
To a building.
So.
Right. So how does, how did the field at Chestnut get their sign? Is that maybe a sales sign that's there?
I think they call it gateway sign. Through a master, for a subdivision.
Right, for a subdivision.
So.
Wait, he's just raised a question.
I just, I understand, with all due respect, your need for wanting to control perhaps the size of the sign, because you wouldn't want to have a ground sign that exceeds 50 square feet, which is in our bylaw, our ground signs can't exceed 50 square feet. It could be subject to interpretation, the maximum overall area of the sign, based on what our existing bylaw is. And I would think that the design review commission committee, or the planning board, would look at those guidelines and say, here we have a mix of uses, we have commercial, we have business, we have residential. Therefore, in the area where we're doing townhomes, we're not going to put a ground sign. But maybe at the entrance, we will allow for that ground sign that is aesthetically compatible with the rest of the architecture that is being constructed under this master-planned mixed-use development. Because I don't think, when we're looking at a mixed-use development, we're going to sell, a developer's going to come in, and he's going to say to whatever business entity is coming, go and use your, your stock, I'm gonna use CVS, because CVS has a typical structure that they built. However.
And they lie.
And in some communities, though, some communities say, and forgive me, the pharmacy, the pharmacy, no, 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 we're not going to allow you to build like that because we have design guidelines. Therefore, we want you to maintain the charm and the character that is representative of East Long Meadow. So make it look more like something that resembles a house, you know, instead of a 35-foot structure of a blank wall. So that's where the design guidelines come in. They're not strict, they're not saying thou shalt, or thou shalt not, but they're, shan't. Well, thou shalt not, or thou.
Shan't.
They're guidelines, because you really can't, you can't really say to the developer, because we don't have Form-based Code, which is another story, another avenue that we're not going down today, for a planned use development.
You need to do this in 2020.
Yeah, I know. But we can guide them.
My children aren't in the business yet.
You know, we can guide them and let them know what we think.
Yeah, I just, I think the guidance could be taking something that's, without reinventing it, just maybe the similar guidance that was used in, at the, at Center Square.
Which was business.
Which is business.
It's a planned use, so let's just take a look at that, so it's a planned.
And if I may, the big thing, we've got a mixed-use development, we're having residential and business, so I think the developers will also have to be sympathetic to the residents, because you don't want lighted signs that are lighting up the skyline, because residents will complain, they can't sleep at night.
The business by law, business sign by law allows for directory signage out on the public way, or some sort of a 25 feet from the, it's 25 foot setback for a ground sign. And within the structure, it provides for signage on storefronts. And as you asked, that everyone just be the same, now, the process will be under special permit, perhaps through the process and through design review, there may be some suggestion, depending on what's proposed, but the feeling is that every business entity has the right and the need to have some reasonable signage to identify where they are. So that's all addressed in the business by law for signage.
5.8.3, everyone has their book.
Yep.
And in the back to access standards, under the planned business development, which is Center Square?
Correct. I couldn't find any reference to signage.
It does say, to the extent, under 5.245 access standard.
What's the section again, Connie?
5.245 access standards.
Okay.
Let me see, sorry. Okay, B, one driveway per parcel shall be permitted as a matter of right redeemed necessary by the planning board, two driveways shall be permitted as part of the site plan review process, which shall be clearly marked entrance and exit. So that's on your planned business. So forgive me when I brought that up, for the mixed use.
Me.
So.
So I'm looking at 5.1.3.
Most, you know, don't forget, this goes by police and fire, and it goes by DPW, and you're going to look at traffic and circulation. So you've all seen direction signage, you know, signage, or signage for entrance and ingress and egress, and some is really creative and attractive, and some looks like if you hit it with a snowplow, it would tip over. So, again, when you're using your design guidelines, and you're looking at these review, the reviewing, when you're reviewing these plans in their entirety, you're looking at all of the elements that make up this total design, and you want to make sure that they complement one another, and I, I think that the more educated people you have reviewing these documents, the better project you'll have. And I believe also that any developer that's going to come in and present a project of such magnitude, their name is on that project, and they want it to be attractive. They don't want it to look like something, I would hope, that in 20 years' time, has seen better days, that's going to stand the test of time, if you will. And I, as long as we're allowed to hold them to standards, because we do get pushback, you know, why do I have to do this? I'm constantly telling people why you have to do this. And education is big. But I think when you have what's being discussed here, I think you'll have a project that comes before the planning board, that is going to be aesthetically appealing, attractive, keeping in context with the community, hoping to create a village that is representative of what exists in the town, and moving forward what you want it to see. And that is maintaining, again, the charm of East Long Meadow, you know, that you have some, just, it's quaint, it's charming, you've got a mix of architecture that is historical, with architecture that is newer, but still keeping, still holding that history, that what we use as colonial history, but that inherent history that we see exemplified around the town. And I think any review board that's looking at this would probably kick back a design that is, what, deconstructivism, which is, even though it's in an industrial park, and it might be appropriate, might not be well-received as something that has that New England colonial flavor associated with it.
My comment to that is I still, in my opinion, would love to have at least some basic guidelines, because the way this bylaw was designed, and I remember, we're supposed to have a design review committee, one, where you would chair, and a person qualified by training and experience in architecture or landscape design would be on, a person owning or operating a business located in East Long Meadow governed by this bylaw, an at-large resident, and one member of the Board of Directors of the East Long Meadow Chamber of Commerce. So that isn't what we have. These are all technical people. We have you, and then we have the planning board. So I would say is, the guy, the ones who designed this design review committee really put together what they thought would be a great team, but in practical, it doesn't exist. It just, so we go to the default, where we might be fortunate to have a business owner on the planning board, where we may be fortunate, somebody with a design review, and we're fortunate to have, you know, the first position, the planning board administrator yourself the planning board administrator yourself helping out, but we don't actually have a true design review committee. So I think the fact that we are in that position right now, I think, in terms of drafting or making comments to the bylaw, we really need to have some standards. And some standards have been well defined, fairly well, for the business district. Please do.
Thanks. You know, the design review is, is gonna be very helpful in this project, absolutely. And I can see design review coming into play with the aesthetic look of the sign, and, and to reference, you know, East Long Meadow, or, or our character. However, if we don't have a twenty-five-foot setback required for the ground sign in, in the beginning. Now, I know that planned unit residential and planned adult residential, neither one of them that I can find addresses a sign, a directory sign, or a, or a, just a, the Elms, or the Fields of Chestnut. It's not reflected, however, planned unit residential is under special permit, the Fields is not. But the Fields mirrored what planned unit residential did, so we have two signs, and, and they're okay. With this kind of a situation, to be able to reference the business criteria, and then have the design review kick in with the look and feel of how it all plays out, at least we have the standard of the size of the sign. Planning boards come and go, I've been in this town long enough, I'm probably the most senior person here, and I can tell you that there has not been consistency over time with certain issues, because boards change, the leadership changes, and I think that's why we rely so heavily on our bylaw. That would be my opinion, and, and it's not to, to discount what you've said, because it's all important. I just think that we need some standards with which to say, yes, this is what you should follow.
So, are you going to write the sign by law, or am I gonna write the sign by law?
There's no sign, we already have one.
No, no, for the mixed-use district.
Just basically, signage will be determined based on the business sign.
Right, which you said in your very first application to us, was that it would reflect the criteria...
Unless you'd like to write something more strict.
I'm fine with business, you know, I'm fine with business, I'm also sensitive to the fact that the mixed-use bylaw has required a hundred thousand square feet of, what is effectively a hundred thousand square feet of commercial space. So I'm saying, okay, it's gonna be in four or five different buildings, spread across eight hundred feet of frontage, you know, how is that gonna work? Okay. I'm comfortable with figuring out the planning board, that, that works for me.
Well, you know, and I'm, are you feeling or sensing something that we should be more specific on? I mean, we're trying to make this, the, we're trying to fine-tune this document as best as we can to address as many issues as we can come up with.
Yeah.
You know, the, the truth is that this is a leap of faith for the town of East Long Meadow, and we may overlook something, and so are you telling us that we should be thinking about something else?
No, I, I think your business works fine, you know, and if we think that the residential needs some signage identification, we'll ask for it, and we'll figure out how we get it, that's all.
And I would think that some of the residential signage, if, um, might be within the parcel and part of your requirement, I, I mean, residential for, okay, if you have a condominium section, and it may have a, a name to it. You would apply whatever standards are in place, or it's under special permit, so then, that would be, that would be discussed, but... Because right now, we don't allow signage in residential neighborhoods, except for contractor signs.
And that might be fine, again, because it'll, you know, it'll have, you know, my three entrances are going to be, they're gonna have a street name, you know, so...
Right.
You know, they're gonna have, they're gonna be Elm, Maple, and whatever, and that's how, you know, my residential will be identified, one, two, three, Machtingburg Lane, whatever.
And you would have fire, I'm sorry, through the chair, you would have fire, police, which certainly want buildings identified, so...
Yeah.
Well, you know, I would think that all of that piece would come with your, with site plan, with design review, um...
No, and, and like, I just looked at, you know, the fairways development that I'm modeling this after, and, you know, we have awnings, we do not have awning signs, so I'm like, okay, I don't have to worry about awning signs. And then I looked, and we don't have blade signs, so I don't have to worry about that, you know, so it's like, okay, you know, three, three square feet per linear feet works, providing for a secondary sign works, providing for window signage works.
Right.
Your business district works perfectly.
Okay.
Your one directory pile, you know, ground sign, whatever you call it, that works perfectly. And again, when I'm limited, it's easier to tell the tenants, I can do that. And again, they don't care, as long as nobody else gets it. As long as everybody gets treated the same, everybody's fine. So again, I think your business district works, and where the, you know, and we put, for example, you know, we put sixteen twenty-four, Stelton Road is, you know, three feet long and a foot and a half high. You know, sixteen twenty-four is on the third floor of the building, you know, you identify it, and boom, that's where it is. And then I just learned that, you know, how the place is operating, they have Uber...